I'd like to call to order this work study for independent school district six, two floor, four. Four with the word release call roll.
Boy.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Ellison.
Here.
Peggy.
Here.
Mullin.
Here.
Noemester.
Here.
And Wilson.
Here.
All right. We'll move into our first discussion item, which is the solar energy installation. Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, Chairman Wilson, members of the board. For the past several years, our building operations coordinator, Dan Rojer, has been working toward looking into solar options for the district as we're reducing our carbon footprint. Reducing the amount of energy we pull them out of the grid and potentially saving the district some of their energy expenses. We've looked at several options and we have an option that we're particularly interested with or interested in and have a few guests with me tonight. Chris Seibos, President and CEO, and Rich Regis, Senior VP of Business Development for Ideal Energy, is going to share an opportunity for the district to reduce our carbon footprint and save some money over a long term. So welcome, Rich and Chris, and turn it over to you.
So we founded this company back in 2010. About the original rebate program to Excel Energy called the original Solar Rewards program. And since inception, we've done 300 of these commercial installs, about half of them with public entity nonprofits, above 75 schools today, and the rest, the other half with four profit customers all over the place, like Schneiderman's Furniture, all their locations. It's just been a nice, nice nine-year run working on this stuff. And we're excited to be working with the district here. I don't know what you want to add.
Where does everybody kind of start? Trying to handle Timmy's here some information. And I have to get a goal or macro scope of what we're talking about.
Yeah, we're just watching the process.
Okay, sure. All right, so what we've been doing is we've been installing solar arrays using these rebidings, rebate coordinators like Rich had mentioned for the last several years. And there's a rebate program in the state of Minnesota called Solar Rewards. Last year, that statute was changed, was changed under the 40 kilowatts again. What it does is it allows us to get over a 10-year period for each kilowatt hour generated from a solar array, there's an 8 cent payment that comes from the utility each year. And so that's what our business is bound around, is leveraging different pieces of opportunities inside of, maybe by legislating utilities to install solar arrays in different places. We usually do business with like customers who are, you know, in business, so to speak, and they have tax bills and all these different kinds of things. The way to make solar work is leveraging all the different pieces to pay for a system so you can pay for it and then save money on your utility bill. So when we're usually doing transactions with like poor profit businesses and stuff like that, we have to leverage tax benefits and tax credits and rebates and bundle all this stuff together and then people will pay you, pay us, and then they do it over time to get these things. And when you're in the public sector, there's really not an opportunity to do that because these incentives, et cetera, are available, like cash credits can be given to schools and all these different pieces. So about seven or eight years ago, we started a program, which we started with the Ridge Hills School District, and we've done business with a whole bunch of school districts thereafter. And what we've done is we've created a, well, what we do is we've set up a system now where we have solar arrays where all these tax benefits and all those things are able to be leveraged by us as a company. And you're able to own the solar array as a school district. Behind the scenes, we're monetizing these rebates to come over 10 years. We wait to get them, that helps to pay for the system. We're able to monetize this tax credit, you get a 30% tax credit when you put a solar array in. So in order for us to leverage that, I'm a managing partner of a tax fund, which is part of my partner's little national bank. And basically they run a tax fund for them so we can leverage tax credits through the bank and monetize them to help pay for these projects. And the school's contribution to it is to pay for a fraction of the price by paying for the energy that comes out of the solar array over time. So when we're doing this, our goal is to leverage all the different pieces and ways the company to get them. And what we do in turn is we have a solar array which is owned by the school, and then behind the scenes, we're the tax owner of it, not the actual owner of it, but as a tax owner, we can leverage all the monitoring incentives to pull them all together. So what happens is at the end of the day, we set up a structure so the energy that's produced from the solar array over time, that you guys pay for that energy per unit that's generated over time. And our goal is to make sure that when we're doing that, that we actually provide economic savings to the school district. So the rates, so we bundle all these things together and we look at the fraction of what the school is paying, pay for like less than half of the solar array over 15 years. And then after that, the solar array is basically the school's for thereafter, and then from there you get free energy from the solar array. And when we provide this, we are really kind of very interested in the things that we can do for the school systems. So our program has been set up with some primary objectives in mind, which are, one is to, you know, the school wants to own their solar array, two, they want it to save some money along the way hopefully, three, the upside of having a solar array on the building. So once you get it through like a payback period and all this stuff that comes out of the solar array, the rest of its life is free. And then we wanted to couple with education. So what we've done as a business is put together all those components and do a package that we've worked with all sorts of different schools with. And our process goes something like this, we've been through a lot of these steps already. We've already worked with Dan over the last year, and we have these rebate security committees at school already, that's kind of a thing we need to get them. We were able to get last year's rebates, which were more favorable rebate because they dropped the rebate losses last year.
By 25%.
By 25%. So we have that a lot of security problem for different schools to present, to identify them. And at this point, we're pretty much in a goal position. We've worked to get paperwork put together with Jason Wire, who's here at burning, and we got that through this morning. We worked with him to share with him, excuse me, Dan, to share with some of the energy impacts of what it would look like with the school and how we'll be displacing some of the consumption at each site. We put it together and shared some of the educational materials that we use to help, you know, teach kids. And we really love to do this, we feel like we have some other districts too, and just love to answer questions or anything you could have about what we're doing and how we can get there.
Yeah, go ahead.
How long do the solar arrays last? What's the, you said a long time warranty, but what is that actual warranty?
So the warranty on the solar array, warranties, there are, one, two, there are three primary elements to a solar array, the rest is just a lack of wiring to your building. The way these work is it's a solar array, which is solar panels, they sit on your roof, they're held together by metal racking, which is aluminum. The racking is held in place by cinder blocks, so there's no penetrations at all, so it'll just held down by weight, okay, and it lasts on the roof. Solar panels have a 25-year warranty with them. The second piece of the equipment is something that is called an inverter. Solar array produces like battery, it's a bunch of batteries connected together, so it makes DC power. So in order to make it useful inside of the school, we have to make AC power, AC power. And you do that by running it through something called an inverter. And an inverter is basically a box, solar array goes into it now, it comes three phases of power, which is, you kind of go to your building, connect that directly into your, you know, building electrical system, so electrons from your roof can be used in the building before they're pulled out from the grid. So that's how you get the reduction in consumption. The inverters have a 12-year warranty on them. Those, we can buy a warranty for about $700, it extends out to 20 years. There's something called, and the cost of those is about $1,500, and they have to be replaced at some point in time. There's two of those per system. The other piece is called the power optimizer. So what we do when we put solar arrays on top of buildings, we need to be mindful of Christmas tree lights, remember? Remember Christmas tree lights when we all grew up, you take one light out, the whole string dies, and you can't find it, you don't know what's going on, think of the light out. Solar is just like that if you don't use very good equipment. So what we use with this equipment is something called the power optimizer, it works with that inverter. And what it does is it takes all the solar panels and it puts them together and has them working in pairs so they work optimally together. And it takes them all and it puts them together in parallel instead of series. And parallel means if one panel or one part of a panel or a leaf falls on it, the rest of the thing works, it's not actually covered by stone. Those pieces have a 25-year warranty with them. And so that's, you're basically working with, you know, 25-year warranties and then an inverter, which is one piece of equipment that after about, call it for 15 years, has to be replaced out. Like I said, you can get a replacement, one, bought an extra one now, you're $1,500, but what happens is we tend to, we buy warranties with them, and we buy them so that we have a 20-year warranty as part of the program. So when you get past, I think it's 13 years underneath, you have free energy that's generated from the system. And so that, that's a wonderful, you know, bucket of, you know, revenue to help pay for that, pay for teachers, schools, books, and all sorts of different things. So our program's built about, you know, working through a period of time to, you know, get that done and then turning over the best part to the school we're done.
And I think there's a 25-year warranty on the panels.
Yeah, it's 25.
Mr. Wilson.
I've got two questions, one financial, one technical. Financially, you said 8 cents per kilowatt hour, is that what we generate?
That's-
Or is it only the excess?
That's the, that's the part that Excel Energy over 10 years, for each year, so we wait through a year and then based upon the prior year's energy production, there's a rebate that comes to Excel Energy, which is 8 cents. Over the course of the 10 years that it's paid out, it's about $33,000, $34,000, and we wait to get that over 10 years. We don't, so we wait to get that as it comes. So we're kind of motivated to be here to make sure your stuff works, because if it doesn't work, you don't get that rebate, you don't pay. And so that's why we're, we set up our program to make sure we're motivated, to make sure that every project we do is successful by being on your team, because if we didn't set it up that way, I think we wouldn't-
In the early generations of solar collectors, there were large battery arrays involved. Is there any particular area that would have, you know, large lithium ion, you know, batteries in any of the buildings in this system?
No.
Going all the way from, okay.
No, these are just, see, but we're putting on solar arrays that are relatively small. This is about 4,000 square feet on each roof, so they're not particularly large. And they won't offset enough energy to need to store or send to the back, so to speak, so it'll all be used on site. So you don't need battery backup systems with these, they're kind of leading edge technology, which we're not really in the business of providing stuff that's new anymore.
Right.
We want to make sure that we're using these, the best parts that have proven that, you know, work. So battery technology is something that we're, we're using with these systems.
So Will, have you found that there is typically in like your school setting, energy that's sent back to the grid?
No.
Okay.
Because you're talking about like, you know, $200 or $300 of electricity per month, and you should see your electric bill now.
Yeah.
So we're offsetting a small fraction. What I did is I, I don't know if you have it or not, but I gave Dan a picture of each school, the energy consumption on a graph of what they historically have done, the expected energy production from the solar array, how that superimposes on your existing energy consumption, and shows how your new energy consumption should look something like this subject to the sun doing what it's supposed to do. So what you'll find out is that we're never producing any more energy that you can use out of the school at any moment in time. Therefore, it does go back to the grid and, you know, battery backups and all that stuff.
Mr. Chapman.
So if you're not, if you're not using that instead of for storage, like when the sun's up today or whatever, how efficient are these panels with regard to cloudy weather? I mean, you're in Minnesota, we've got, as you've seen, a lot of cloudy days. So how, when it's real cloudy, how much energy are they-
You get less energy when it's cloudy. So what happens is when you want to figure out how much energy is going to come out from a solar array, well, you use something called 10-year TNY data. So like at the airport, they have these things that say, this is much of radiance that came down on this spot, okay? And so that tells you how much energy is supposed to come on the panels, and that's the 10-year period. And so you use that data and you use some programs that had a model solar, and it gives you the outcome of this, how much energy we expect, you know, per DC unit of the solar panel. So what happens is there's about 1,175 kilowatt hours that come out from every DC, you know, watt. You have a 40-kilowatt system, 40 times 11, 75 is about 48,000 kilowatt hours per year that each one of these we generate. And if you're down south, you get warm. If you're up in Canada, you're going to get less. So it's based upon this location on Earth and the weather and the data that actually lands here.
Okay.
So my question is, I was reading here, and like you said, you still get energy on cloudy days, what about when our roof is covered in snow from days of non-stop heavy snow falling? Are we, or Christmas break, say, when the schools are closed, or how are we getting energy if it's closed, it's covered in sulfur?
That's why the energy curve that you produce over the winter months is very, very low, and over the summer it's very high, and then the winter goes very low, so it kind of like looks like that. So the reason that we use those things called optimizers is because if I have a little bit of snow that covers one of my panels, if I don't have them, I don't get any energy power at all. So like I show you like on my phone, we have, one of the things that comes with this is software that, show it to you, I'll pull it up for you. But it's software that comes with the, it matches up with the inverter technology we use. They're the largest inverter company in the world, they're called SolarEdge. And that takes all the individual panels and gets all the information on the web. So the optimizers and that, putting them in parallel means if I cover part of a panel with snow, and the rest of the solar array is covered, but the rest of the solar array will still bridge energy. So when you're completely dumped, you get nothing. When the wind starts blowing, you start having a corner of the solar array exposed and it starts coming back. So you'll see a few days over the course of the year where there's just no energy there. That's why we use 10-year weather data, because that statistically is what we yield over a period of time.
Here's a picture of Columbia Heights today, you can see, barely see, but this is basically a bell curve, and that's the energy produced. The area in the green is the KWH that was produced today. You can spin back and see like yesterday, this is a little more choppier, it's, that's a cloudy day happening there, we have a nice sunny day, it's going to be a bell curve. But track this daily, monthly, annually, wherever you'd like to show that production.
And the other thing about this is that every single solar panel that's up on your roof, this actually gives you individual readings of each solar panel, so like-
Here's the layout here, and if there's a panel that's producing differently, it's going to show up as a different shade of blue. And if there's a problem panel, you can see, you can see this in red, and we email our operations team, we know there's a problem, we can help fix it. So it's a really useful tool.
Mr. Chapman.
Well, Eric, what can I, oh, sorry, can I ask you?
Guess I'm kind of a fan of a two-story building, so I'm always thinking that there's a battery. We're going to be connected to the regular grid, and we will supplement some of our use with whatever we generate. What happens when the regular grid is down, are we dependent upon the connection to the regular grid? I'm wondering if the electricity goes out in all the way near Lake. Are we out too?
Your solar array will turn off. And their solar arrays are designed to do that, because if the grid is down or people are working on the grid, solar arrays will send energy back and shock people. So the inverters are built specifically that if they don't see power from the grid, they will not operate.
Okay, so there's no benefit to being-
No, you can't survive on this like that, but you can-
Unless you've got batteries.
If you put a, if you're different kinds of systems, you can do that, you can battery backups and all sorts of stuff that's, you know, not really related to this, but-
Okay, so you can't go, ha ha. I started with a stop.
No, no, ha ha, sorry.
Mr. Chapman.
So getting back to the battery question. So batteries, I thought I had heard that, you know, battery technology had come to a point where, you know, the costs had come down and so forth. So basically what you're saying is it wouldn't be worthwhile to, to have batteries for those days when the sun is really producing and-
There's a few reasons. One is that the cost of the batteries is really quite expensive relative to their battery. The rate structure here in Minnesota doesn't provide any value to you to have battery backup as flat. If you're in California, where you have all these different things that are set up to work with solar, there's some value to having a battery there. I'll also tell you that when you're dealing with technology, the first few generations of technology that come out, we want to run as far away from as you can as solar. I'll tell you that, I know that, because we're putting in more of the first generation of solar in the state than any other company. All of our systems before it was hard work, you're getting them to work great. So I don't want to lead with equipment that's novel, and there's other issues with lithium ion, that's basically something that can oxidize and for our building health. So I'm not a big fan of putting like lithium batteries and bulk inside of establishments with kids, I won't go there. And so there's different kinds of technology coming out with the battery backup stuff that tends to use like things like electrolytes and things like that. The coolest one I've ever seen, that's basically the same size as this solar array, costs the same amount as the solar array. It's a massive steel container that has electrolytes, and if this is the last 25 years, it's the same stuff that they, the orange stuff that they pour out of like helicopters to put fires out in the forest. You can make solar batteries out of it, it won't hurt anybody, but it costs an enormous amount of money, and it's all not believing stuff. So we don't know whether it's beta VHS CD, we don't have any idea what batteries are yet. When we know what they are, we'll be there. But until we know what they are and they figure it out, I want to make sure we deliver stuff that's going to work long-term, always with you.
And you could add them on at a future date, not a problem.
Yep, that's true. The technology we use is designed to work with, so that would-
So you don't need an inverter?
Yeah, you would add a battery, controls and all sorts of stuff, and more wiring and things, but that would only be beneficial if you wanted to capture energy and use it at night, or, you know, you had access and you wanted to save it, you know, and that's not what we're talking about here.
Mr. Wilson.
So converse of our student liaison, Madison's question, we're going to produce our peak electrical production at the time when our building occupancy is at its lowest. How's that power handled then?
Oh, help me understand.
Well, we're going to, we're going to generate the most electricity during the summer off, or summer months, right? Well, that's when the buildings are at their lowest occupancy.
That's also when you're charged for the most for your electricity, except for one building. It's also when you have these peak plans for the utility, you have these, what's that called, peak control. Yeah, so peak control, so basically every single unit, you remember the threshold amount you get penalized by utility like tremendously? And that happens during the summer when it's hot, when air conditioning happens, and guess what, that's when solar does its best. So every unit of energy, this is a 40-kilowatt solar array, will produce 36 kilowatts of peak power during the summer.
It will be exceeding the draw on the solar panels even when our buildings are done.
Yeah, that's, that's sizable, but they're especially beneficial in the summer during the conditions that you're talking about, because that's when you get the benefits, you're saving on kilowatt hours, you're saving on kilo, you know, demand.
And that's going to go back to the grid even then, huh?
No, they're, they're all sized such that they're, none of them are any larger than your consumption. And that's one of the things that Dan has to do, is match up the actual consumption for each building to what the actual production of the solar is, to make sure that we didn't have anything that really sent anything back to the grid. With the exception of one building, I don't remember which one it was, Gulfview, where you don't have any occupancy during the summer, we're still in a spot where we're not producing more energy than that building consumes it.
So even if you did, by law, we're in that metering state, they have to buy the excess energy.
Yes, exactly.
They buy it back at a wholesale rate of about three and a half cents instead of the wholesale that you're, you're getting charged. So we want to make sure we size them properly so that doesn't happen, and that's the case for your buildings.
So putting too much solar on a building is never good, because you don't get anything from the utility or, you just want to use it all on site, the way like the cost, they want to charge it, but you don't want to send it back to them so they pay you up for it.
Mr. A.
I just have a, thank you. I think it's about time we moved into alternative energies. And then question, you mentioned all buildings, is this going on all buildings in the district?
Yeah, we won't go on all buildings right away, as you know, we've got a bunch of old roofs.
Yeah.
And it doesn't make sense to spend the money putting on those right now, and then have to take them off in the next couple of years to put the roof up on. So we've identified five buildings that it'll work for right now, we've had new roofs, we won't touch them in the next 20 years. And now we're going to do a bunch more of those, three, six more, those sections this summer, so we will get, add solar to them, six roofs to have, after the building's done, so maybe in the fall or next summer.
Okay, because that was the basis of my question.
Yep.
When we look at our facilities, we know we're going to be replacing roofs, and we're in the middle of this facilities planning also, so there's certain buildings that haven't identified.
Yeah, we're identifying them, we're not going to touch any of the ones that are in, we're going to have facility plans, we'll get that all.
Okay.
We mapped out the roofs and panels, we only go on roofs that are new. So some portions of, we have multiple buildings where just a portion of the roof is new, and so if it's a portion that works for the location of the panels, then we'll, we'll do that. What we're going to have to do is pull these panels off in seven, eight years because we need to repair them.
That's part of our process when we go through figuring out what's going on, one of the things we need to do is make sure we put it on the right roof, make sure it has a warranty, and do all the stuff that's necessary to preserve it. I mean, there are things you have to do to it right, you know, engage our structural engineers, make sure they're in the right spots, and then we have to write a lot of ballots, and this, dealing with school code, your code is much more restrictive than general buildings, so we have to make sure that everything we do is consistent and all that. And so one of the biggest things, making sure when you put something on roof, you want to, or a new roof, you don't want to put it on an old roof.
Yeah.
And so that's what, one of the things that we've been working on, is to meet all four of us, is to pick those roofs, pick the new ones, find the opportunities, match up with what we can do now, match up with new roofs that are coming, looking at your, you know, grants to plan, finding places that might have some opportunities, if things work out right or not. And so that's what we've kind of worked out, is a group to try to find those, those right spots, and then kind of incrementally, look for things that have to come right for the school.
Okay, and thank you for including an education piece too.
Oh, yeah.
I was, that jumped out at me as I was reading through, that you will help schools incorporate the data into the science standards.
We're trying really hard to, I, one of the people on my team is a gal who is an educator, and her name's Marson Wire. She works, is basically building curriculums for schools, that type of thing. And so she works with us to help build curriculums, and what our goal is, kind of, is like, anybody who's enrolled, we're all sure to get into solar. We're kind of interested in really doing it right. So we're mindful of the standards and what they're coming, and we build programs that are aligned with the new standards. And so we want to be able to have something that actually can be used in the classroom. And what we've really found is the biggest resistance from that is teachers, to be honest with you. Maybe because it's hard to integrate something that works in a system that they're used to, or things like that. So we've worked really hard to kind of overcome those barriers and make sure that we're delivering something that meets standards, that can be used inside of the curriculum legitimately. And we targeted two different places, we targeted in the ed, I'm speaking out of my, I'm speaking partially with partial knowledge, so bear with me as I say that. But what we've done is kind of targeted the education in the fifth, fourth, fifth grade area where they have a science component, we built a curriculum around the standards, around that with some examples of learning and all those different things that kids go through with, you know, getting together in groups and all the steps that are integral to that process. And then we found that the place where we have a lot of landing without having to get deep into the curriculum, part of it, is the kind of the physics classes, in the higher end classes, what we turn over is a lot of material, we turn over education, over structural drawings, electrical drawing, art manuals, the ability to monitor stuff on the web, track it, and there's so many things you can do with the science curriculum, just by having something to talk about, without even having a formative curriculum about it. We found that a lot of physics teachers kind of reach out to us and say, hey, I want to sit down and see what we can use this for, and they use that well in the classroom. But it's hard to break into the traditional processes, you know. I have a, I have standards I need to teach, or I have to teach as part of it, and teachers kind of use it, they, they know. And we want to get something that's really easy so that they can say, I'd like to use this. And that's where our plan is and our goal.
But in terms of tracking long-term data, you know, the math classes, we're often asking in science, we would give them data that they would use with the kids for graphing and stuff, so you have a wealth of data.
Grab it all.
Yeah, it can be real-
Grab it all real time, and look at it in the classroom.
You've got a wealth of data.
Look at clouds go over and see what happens to that, and there's a lot of fun things.
There's a lot of application.
Oh, yeah, do that. Structural engineering, electrical engineering, we like to have some of our professionals kind of come in and visit the kids, you know, our structural engineers are like, yeah, let me come in, I'd love to do that. And, you know, we have an education component, we're one of the, the gentleman that works for us also has an educational part of his curriculum that he provides for us, one of our master electricians, we have him come in and visit schools as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
She asked part of my question, and the question of buildings, kind of tied into that, so what percentage of our usage would come from solar as opposed to the standard that we have now, and where are we building towards?
What, what standards are you?
Well, we're using, we're using electricity now, it's coming from-
I mean, off the grid, right?
What?
Off the grid.
Right.
What we're buying right now.
Solar.
She's asking, how much solar would we produce?
Well, yeah, what, what amount does the solar produce, and what are we looking at trying to increase that to?
What's your, we're using certain demand on the grid.
Right.
Very small. It's, each, each system is about, it depends on the school, because you have a lot of different consumption profiles at the school. But your solar array will offset about $5,000 for the cost of energy, to give you an idea. So that's just kind of from the basic amount of energy that's produced and approximately what energy costs, okay? So that's the, so if you spend $100,000 a year, you're going to offset about one twentieth of your consumption. If you spend-
We spend over a million a year on electricity.
Yeah, I'm showing $86,000 for December of '18. For that previous month was $86,000. So if we're talking about six, $30,000 would be generated annually, not monthly.
So then what are we trying to build to, because that's almost like a drop in the bucket overall, we're talking millions of dollars, I mean, are we looking to build this to a certain point, or- Are we looking to, to build this to a certain point or?
Well, I think ultimately we'd like to see panels on all of our sites. Beyond that, I think what the challenge, the challenge with schools doing solar, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but the challenge with schools doing solar is the capital investment on the front end is so significant. And so the tax, the rebate and the, and the tax incentives allow somebody to capitalize on incentive that we could capitalize on because we can't capitalize on a tax incentive. Two of them are taxes. So it allows somebody to capitalize on that and then, um, that reduces our capital expenditure. So this project is going to cost us nothing. They're going to make some money on it in the process. We're going to get a $137,500 solar panel on our roof, reducing our carbon footprint savings about $1,000 a year per unit for the first 13 years. And then we'll see significant savings, um, you know, in the $10,000 annually M H U after that. So once, the 13 years is kind of like a mortgage, you're paying off the, the, um, capital investment. So it's kind of a nice arrangement for us because we don't have to come up with money to do this. So if, if there's another strategy that.
There are.
That comes up where we can expand the square footage, I think that'd be something for us to continue to explore. And this is probably a pretty good first step.
I'll tell you what you're limited, well, this is, this is the solar rewards program and this is limited to 40 kilowatts AC. That's one opportunity. And then, um, what you'll find, and there are other ways of doing solar. They have other programs that are available, um, that allow you to do larger solar projects. You can go up to a megawatt, which is, you know, 20 times bigger. What you'll find is, is that you don't have a roof that's new to do it. We had to struggle to find roofs available that was new to accommodate the spaces that we do. So you have this incremental plan to add all these little sections of roof up. What you want to do, if you want to do larger solar, is you want to replace a lot of roof and you want to put solar on it at the same time. The amount of money you can save by doing this, I'm being straight with you, when you put a big solar array on an actual big roof at the same time it's installed, you're going to pay for your roof for free. It's the way it works out, high level, okay? But you're limited right now because you have all these different sections of roof. They're smaller, compartmentalized. You don't have like a big open, there are very few schools that you actually have like a big open flat roof. It's all sorts of little compartmentalized roofs and they have different ages that are all kind of incrementally through there. So where we see new roofs, we'd love to, yeah, work with you on different ways to do more, but we're just kind of dealing with what we can do now based upon the circumstances we have.
So say we're a district that's looking at building. Are we considering this in the facilities planning at all if we actually build a high school or build a middle school or build a, is that something that we're looking at? Maybe doing the whole entire thing on one of those buildings?
Yeah, we're a long ways from that, but I think if we're building a new school, then we'd be looking at that. We're a second to look at.
What you do is when you build your school, you just make sure that it's built so that you meet the structural standards to allow you to put the solar array on top of it. That's the thing that you need to do. And if you can hit it on, from a structural perspective, then you can put as much solar on it that will fit subject to setbacks and lanes and all the different electrical code and building code requirements and stuff like that.
I have, I have several questions. Um, so I thought in the initial conversation, you said it was going to cost the district 15% to, we had to pay a portion of the installation for the panels. Is that not the case?
No.
There's no cost to the district?
No, there's, so we don't charge anything for this. It's the only payments you make to us. What happens is after we turn on the solar array, after it's made one month's of energy, we collect a payment for that month's energy.
From the, not from the district, but from the.
From the district.
From the district.
Because you guys saved on your electric bill because you didn't have to buy that energy. So what we're doing is we're swapping an expense from a utility, from an expense for an asset that you own on your roof instead. So it's just a swapping of an expense and the expense for the solar energy is a little less than you're paying for the grid. We have this 25-year system asset that lasts that long and it'll last longer. And we've set it up to have a payback period of 13 years. And so once 13 happens, all that energy that's generated for 13 to infinity and beyond comes to the school district completely free. And so that's, that's where you get that part.
Okay, I, I understand. So what you're saying is that, so we're, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, you said we're, currently we're looking at five locations for panels?
Up to five.
Up to five? And those would each cost $1,000. So we're looking at, basically, we would be paying back your company $5,000.
That's what you're saving.
That's what, well, you, you just told me, you just said that it's going to cost us, you're paying, we're paying you back the difference for that.
Let me help you. So, um, we're saving energy. We're saving about $5,000 a year in energy. The amount we collect is about $4,000 for that same energy. Therefore, you know, we collect that $4,000 a little bit per month over the course of the year for 13 years, okay? And that extra money is money you save as you go.
So we would pay the $5,000 to Excel.
Yeah. You're built from Excel.
Instead, we are built from Excel, which reduces $5,000.
I understand.
Yep.
And that, would that $5,000 would go to your company then?
Yeah, that's how we, we pay for the solar array we take.
Okay, that's so basically.
Four, $5,000.
$4,000 goes. $4,000 goes to the company.
Yeah, the district keeps a thousand.
The district keeps a thousand.
Yeah.
So per month, we're, we're basically, we're obligated to you if it's a, if they have, the number's a thousand, right? We're obligated to you for $4,000 a month to help pay back these units as they get placed on the roofs.
Um, yeah, you're, you're saving money.
I understand.
Yes, that's correct. So what we, we get paid by, we monetize a tax credit for you.
Plus you get the tax credit.
We monetize it, which means we work it through the bank and the bank takes a large fraction of it and then it comes back to our company to help pay for the solar array. That's one chunk. We wait 10 years from the utility to get paid another chunk. And then we collect money from the school, which is power payments over 13 years that are, as I described. So those are payments now, you know, you're not paying the utility because those kilowatts and those kilowatt hours that you're pulling from the grid, guess what? You're not buying them anymore because they're coming from here. So that unit cost on utility, well, your units will go down that you get built for by the utility and those are produced from the building. Because when you have a solar array, electrons are lazy. They come from the closest spot. So if you have a solar array in your building, they're going to come from the solar array first and then they're going to pull from the grid. So it's always pulling from the building and that's where the savings comes from.
So if I were, if I were a private company and I came to you and said, hey, I want to put the solar array on the top of my building. And, and just tell me what it costs, what would, what would the cost be for that solar array?
Same price that you guys are paying. And they would pay $137,000 in the.
So it's $137,000 is what the cost is?
Right. And then what's going on with us is.
Per unit.
Per unit.
Okay.
And what we do is we take that rebate and all those different things. And I think what we collect is about $70,000 incrementally over 13 years to help pay for that $137,000 asset is what's going on. So it's like you're paying like 45% of the actual cost as a school just from expense savings instead of having to buy it or put money in or levy or any of those kinds of things.
So what happens, um, so what happens if we have to replace a roof, um, and the solar panels there and you have to come out and remove it? Do we have to pay an additional cost for that?
Yep, that's why we pick new roofs.
Okay, well, I mean, listen, you know, we get 15 feet of snow, which never happens in Minnesota, but if it, if we do and a roof collapses, there's a problem. And I understand there's insurance and a lot of things, but still that's a bottom line cost for us.
You come back and rebuild it with the insurance.
So you would have to come back and rebuild it and there would be an additional cost for.
That would be, are your insurance.
I understand.
But yes, that would be part of something like if you had an air conditioner unit and it was damaged in the same circumstances, it would be the same thing.
So the insurance rate on that for a million dollars worth of solar panels is $138 a year. So it's a pretty, uh, pretty affordable.
So a year?
A year.
A year.
Yeah. So there's really no cost for the insurance margin. It's pretty negligible. And it's there for that kind of odd obscure thing that you never expect to happen, but if it doesn't plan for that, then we've got it covered and we've accounted for the cost of that until we look at it as well.
Mr. Chandler.
In terms of the insurance, um, would the insurance company, a property, current property insurance company, increase the deductible on those panels should they be damaged compared to, you know, the rest of the buildings, the rest of the structures, um, given the fact that they are so vulnerable to hail and so forth?
Well, the first thing is they're really not vulnerable to hail and stuff like that. They're engineered around that so that doesn't become an issue.
So they would take, uh, because we've had great ball-sized hail, huh?
Definitely.
Would they withstand a baseball or a baseball?
No, they're engineered for 50, about 50 mile an hour winds and like an inch of hail. But if you have something bigger.
It'd stay in with it.
Yeah.
It's like a golf ball.
So it's tempered glass, heavy-duty aluminum. They're pretty durable panels. We've only had, I think, three panels out of our, what, 15, 20,000 damaged by hail. Because you never get the directly north going storm, it comes from the side.
They're at an angle, yeah.
And they're at an angle, a pitch, a 10-degree pitch.
And so like the, the way that the insurance industry views solar is, um, they, they now rate solar, they were kind of an evolving industry, but now they consider solar to, we're actually rated as an HVAC company, is how the insurance companies have responded. So they basically look at solar now like a rooftop unit. And when we're doing a business, we're basically, you know, work on, but everything is aligned with that exact profession. The way they treat solar assets is like a, a air conditioner unit or HVAC system or a chiller on your roof, just equipment on your roof. And, um, it's, it's treated exactly the same.
So the insurers aren't necessarily bumping up deductibles.
Nope.
Specific to those units?
They charge you premiums for it and then it's just another air conditioner unit to an insurance company at this point in time. And that's an honest, fair, and common principle.
Mr. Wilson.
On the weather range, no, unintended, um, lightning spreads, are they grounded? Um, so there's no likely possibility of a surge that would damage equipment down the line?
There's all sorts of equipment and electrical code requirements that we have to do to deal with all those things. Yep.
Other questions, comments? You know, I, I just saying for me, and I'm, I'm just going to be, because I'm pretty candid, you guys know that, uh, I'm trying to figure out, I, I'm, I'm all for looking at the solar technology and seeing how it will benefit the district and thinking along those lines. I think that's a great value, um, to the district. But my concern is, is that why now? Why are we doing it now when we have a whole facility plan that's going to get ready to come into play? And how come we're not looking at it as a broader scope when may, maybe some of these buildings are changing? And it seems to me that if, if we install a rooftop unit over the summer months or over the spring and then all of a sudden something changes from the plan that we're still working through and trying to figure out what that looks like, um, you know, something, the buildings might change, right? So we're, we're ready to jump on this thing now from what you guys are saying and, and it could be that our, some of our buildings might change and how is that benefiting us if we've got to then, I mean, excuse me, you know, pay again to come back out and remove the unit and install it someplace else or, or do something else? I mean.
Dan, what buildings are identified?
Uh, we've been really careful to stay out of the, the buildings that have been talked about in the facilities plan. Mr. Wald and I have attended all the meetings and the buildings we're talking about right now are, uh, Omeka, Birch Lake, which just got a new roof two years ago, Lake Airs, which also just got a new roof two years ago, and, uh, a section of Matoska, which just got the new gym, I think it was on the new gym that was built four years ago. We've been, uh, very careful.
Omeka, Birch, Matoska.
Lake Airs.
Lake Airs, thank you.
Is there one more? That's four. Uh, that was four. And then, uh, after we do the new roofs this summer, uh, there's been talk about Badness Heights, uh, will possibly sunrise at Normandy, but, uh, they've been talked about in the facilities plan too, so we're all up on them until, until after that gets presented more. So we're moving slowly. We don't want to, I'm disliking Mr. Mullin, I don't want to, we're going to save a little bit of money, we're not going to save a ton of money and I don't want to be spending money on move panels. We're going to be very careful about that. And I think the, the reason we want to jump out of now is just because, uh, the rebate incentives have been cut and we locked into the higher rate right now to pass up that 25%.
Excel Energy is not making it any easier to do solar. Let's be direct with you. I mean, they don't want it. They think it's something that kind of makes it harder for them to be in distance than they're required to do this by the legislature, by the PUC, by people that want it. And so, um, you know, tax credits, tax rates are going down, next year the tax credit goes down and it starts spiraling down after that. So our ability to monetize that disappears. That means you get to pay more. Um, the rebates from last year are now down less. So if you want to go there, if you want to do a solar array now, then you have to pay more because it costs a certain amount to do a project. So these different little buckets that kind of add up to make, you guys only have to pay a certain amount, which is relatively small compared to what's going on, which is paid for just from energy savings, is an expense savings. Um, it's kind of like the perfect storm. When you're doing solar, you want to capitalize on all the opportunities as they come. And we work really hard to align them so that they work right for people at the right times. So, um, we're mindful of the things you're talking about, about going forward. Um, we'd love to talk to you about future projects, but in the here and now, this is really a wonderful way to, um, do some things that I, I think that I've heard that people are generally supportive, to save some money, to get some education in the schools and, um, and accomplish some of those things.
And again, I'm not, not supportive of solar. I'm just saying that I, it just seems to me, and I respect what you're saying, I'm just, I'm, I'm just a little leery of wondering why it's, you know, we're right in the middle of a facilities plan. We don't really know what everything's going to look like, right? I think that for me, I, I want to understand a little bit of the value back to the school district of understanding, you know, if we're paying X amount, um, and then there's some district of understanding, you know, if we're paying X amount, um, and then there's some tax incentives, I, I wanna understand that a little bit more. I wish that information would've came forward a little bit beforehand so that we can look at it. Spade?
I have a, I see it as a good time to do it because we are in the middle of the facilities plan, and I trust there's been a, a lot going on with the facilities plan. We haven't, we've got a partial report, um, we haven't got the final report, but my thinking is, as I said before, it's about time we started looking at alternative forms of energy. And because we are in the middle of the facilities plan, I'm assuming that a lot of work has been done on identifying buildings, et cetera, that this would be the time to take advantage of this and move into something like this. That would, you know, I need to see the final facilities report, but I would say we're coming to the end of that facilities planning, and it would be the time to look at certain buildings and, and move on something like this. That would be my personal feeling.
Dr. Dumas, sir?
I think I'm with Ms. Veyde on this also because it sounds like you all have looked at the questions we're thinking of, and we're all thinking about change. But this is a great opportunity to not spend upfront, just, I'm a great time payment girl, so pay it down at a, at zero percent. And, um, teach kids to reduce their carbon footprint. I mean, I just think it's a great teaching tool that we're not paying you most amount for, like we usually do, and as long as I know it's expandable, whether you can add batteries later, if they turn out to be more reasonable, or make the arrays larger when it looks like that's the way to go. It seems like beginning set of a record, the, the beginning record set, kind of, and a good time to start.
Mr. Chen?
What is the window of opportunity, so to speak, as far as, you know, how quickly do we need to act up as to get these, uh, incentives or rebates and so forth, and, you know, last years and so forth, uh, what you've talked about?
So they have a sunset on them with respect to timing. Sure. And so, um, as long as we get them built by, you know, October, November, we're fine. And so we've kinda worked on a plan that is, you know, incrementally works through that. Um, but that's the timing to ultimately execute.
But, okay, so if you have them built by October, so when would you need to start by, I guess? Kind of work your backward as far as the decision-making process?
We've done, we've done a lot of the work already upfront, to be honest with you, a lot of the work with the logistics to figure out when we're in house. So it's a matter of deploying our structural engineers to get them out to do that, getting the final electrical design done with our electrical engineers, getting those through the utility. That takes usually about a month, month and a half. If things don't work out structurally, that's our expense, it's not your issue, it's ours, so we don't ever go there. Um, but, so there's about a, a two or, two or three-month window to plan, and then there's about a, a three, to get the engineering and everything teed up, and then if you deploy your construction, it takes about a month to get everything done, beginning to end, from permits being pulled to close, started up, the cell turning it on, so to speak.
So we'd need to have a decision by May at the latest?
Yep.
May?
Just like one, the final question, I guess, but, um, so these are just, we're not able to do all the panels on our older buildings because of the new plan. What does the cost look like for future then? Because we're not gonna be able to get them all built, but if we plan on doing this to future buildings, the cost is gonna change for, it's gonna go up because the prices, the rebates and stuff won't be as low?
Yes.
Are right now. What is, do you have any idea of the projected cost for the future?
Yeah, it, it basically takes your opportunity and it takes it and extends the time, um, you know. So you'll add anywhere from three to seven years on it, and then you're just basically having something on your roof that you get incremental savings done, so we've kinda built it to, you know, have incremental savings and a large payback when it's done. Yeah, but that kinda takes it and makes it all incremental. If you, if you wait and tax credits go down and all these things disappear, the, the cost of building, um, stuff is normalized, the prices of all the products have kind of, um, plateaued to the point where businesses were put out because it got so competitive. So now when that naturally happens, then prices kinda normalize, and that's kinda where we're at right now, and then things don't get any cheaper, it's, they go on with respect. They're just gonna keep on going up and up and up, so.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Wilson?
This is really Mr. Dan. Um, I think, Don, you've got a pretty valid point that we're in the middle cycle of this facility, uh, building plan. Why solar, why now? Did we look at any other alternative, you know, hydro be out, but?
We've been, we've been looking at solar, like, four or five years since Paul Wayne and I got here, we've been pitched by community gardens, large arrays on our roofs, and all of them require you to lock in for twenty-five, thirty years, and we were really hesitant to throw our head in there with technology changing, battery power, and this was the one thing that came to us that wasn't a huge commitment for us, wasn't a big sum of money we had to pay upfront to jump in. And it just, it just seemed it's not gonna save us a ton of money upfront electrically, but the biggest thing is not gonna cost us anything. It's, uh, it's a good way to start. All the pitches I've had, they've promised you the world, and this is such a small array, I'd love to, I'd love to see us start small. Show us that this is gonna work, show us, show us it's gonna save us money, and then we can start looking at expanding if it does. So it doesn't really throw us all at one time.
You're gonna know everything you wanna know about solar by doing this, when you're done, and you'll be able to make all sorts of smart decisions about what you want. But if you don't ever get there, you're really, you're kind of in this spot where you don't know how it works for you, so.
I would just like to see a chart or a graph of some kind showing the numbers. It's hard for me to visualize, and so if I could get access to those, that would really help.
Okay. Yeah, we've, we've, Don, we've, these guys have all that stuff. Um, and you'd wanna circulate, or how, how would you like to order to people, or what would you like to do?
I'm gonna share with Dr. Kasmercheck and him, give him to you.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah, glad, glad to do that. That's definitely part of what we deliver, because I haven't been there.
We have a detailed cash flow summary that has all the numbers in there.
Yep.
Be good for you to digest.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Alicia Chace, good night.
Really appreciate it very much.
Next is, uh, the update on fiscal year 2020 budget development. Do you wanna do that?
Yes, sir.
No?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
In January, Tom Wazork and I brought to the board mid-year budget adjustments, those were approved in February, and we also looked at a very preliminary budget for 2019, 20. Um, that's our fiscal year 20 budget that will be bringing to the board in May and for board approval in June, and we refer to that as our preliminary FY '20 budget. Uh, this, this, uh, slide shows our, our budget process. So if you look from the beginning of our fiscal year, and, and this is a new slide you haven't seen before, but it really summarizes, uh, the process that we've used for years. And so I'll be using this every time we, we reach a milestone on the, um, on the slide, I'll be bringing this slide back, so you understand the process that the budget, budget takes. So beginning with our fiscal year, which is July first, uh, July and October, um, is when the official auditor for the district, our certified public accountants, MMKR, begin their work, and they look at closing the books for, um, for the previous year and auditing their books. That occurs, um, July, August into October. That keeps our finance department busy, providing reports for the auditors as they come in. So that's the, the first step. In September, um, the, uh, Minnesota Department of Education publishes or prepares for us the initial levy certification, and we spend, uh, that's about the end of September, and we share that with the board. We will spend September, October into November communicating with MDE as they make up recalculations to the levy certification. That's about four thousand calculations that go into that, and MDE does that for us. And it considers, um, what's a little awkward about it is our fiscal year and the county fiscal years don't line up. We're on a July through June, they're on a January through December fiscal year, so , uh, the, so that process begins in September and goes through December. In November, or more likely December, we bring the audit to the board, and Jim Eit and the managing, managing partner with MMKR will bring the audit to the board. We did that this past December. Also in December, we hold our truth in taxation hearing. The truth in taxation hearing is a legal requirement, it has to be completed by mid-December, so we pair that up with our December regular board meeting, and we had that just this past December. The next step is in January, February, we, we bring, uh, mid-year adjustments to the board, usually to a January work session for board approval in February. Um, and then in June, uh, May, usually a May work session, we bring a preliminary budget to the board, and then in June, the, uh, board would approve the, uh, preliminary budget for the following. So we're kinda like right in between that January, February, and June time, where there's not a milestone on the budget. So we're just bringing an update, uh, to you today. In January, February, we shared that we'd be making cuts, uh, to our expenditures, trying to keep those in line for the twenty fiscal year 2019, 20. Uh, at that time, our initial targeted, target was a number of 1.75 million. Upon further study, we're thinking we should target closer to 2.5 million, that, uh, we think those would be more responsible numbers for us to look at. Matt will talk about those, that process in a moment. Um, costs related to transportation, special education payroll, um, impact those numbers. And so while the inflationary rate in education is typically in the two to five percent, depending on what category you're looking at, um, the funding from the state does, has not kept pace with that. So we know, we've talked about the special ed cross subsidy, that our special ed revenue is capped. Special ed tends to have the highest, um, uh, inflationary increase from year to year in the neighborhood of five percent. And so year after year, that's been a draw on our general fund, to the tune of almost eleven million dollars, um, that's being subsidized. Those are expenditures that are important for us to make. We're serving our most vulnerable students through our special education program, they're the right expenses to make, we're gonna continue to make those expenses, it's the right thing to do. Um, revenues from the state have not kept pace in the special ed world. Additionally, the, um, state has committed to about two percent each year for the last five years, and those were increases over the five years before that, about two percent to the general ed formula. It's important to understand that when the state, um, says they're gonna increase the formula by two percent, that doesn't impact our entire budget. It impacts about sixty percent of our budget, just under seventy million dollars is impacted by that two percent increase. So, uh, I think what happens is the state makes that announcement, and people think schools are really taken care of this year. They were really taken care of, and, and we have felt better about two percent increases because before that it was one and a half, one, one, and then in, uh, 2010, 2011, that it was a zero percent increase to the formula. So, um, that's just a little bit of history on that, and, and how, um, you know, revenues in education, even though the last few bienniums they've tried to take care of education, just hasn't been enough. So, that's a, we think that 2.5 million's probably the right number for us to target, so that's what we're working on. Um, and we'll be coming to the board in April with recommendations for those adjustments. So at this point, I'm gonna turn over to Matt, and we will do questions at the end, and Matt will, and tackle the process and where we're at.
So I just wanted to take the opportunity to spell out the timeline a little bit, and then to also be clear around kind of what we are and aren't pursuing when we're thinking about those adjustments. And so, uh, to be very clear, what we aren't pursuing when we're looking at the 2.5 million dollars there is, we're really not looking at classroom staffing as a means of resolving that budget. And so when we're looking at our staffing ratios for 2019, 20, we really took, um, the world we're living in right now with our staffing ratios in 1819, and we moved them forward adjusted for student population. So we would expect that we're really going to be running with the same level of staffing in 1920 that we were experiencing this year. Uh, so we're not looking to see a reduction across the board. Now, there are some sites, because there's just ebbs and flows with where our student population is, and where some of our big classes are moving through our system. So, you know, it's kind of an anomaly, next year at North, for instance, we're seeing a reduction, um, of a little more than fifty students, uh, that's what we're projecting there. So unless that really changes through, uh, through in-district enrollment or open enrollment, that's going to be the reality there. So that site will see a small shift, but their relative staffing level will remain the same. And that's gonna track in all of our sites there. So there may be a section up at an elementary or a section down at another. However, across the board, we're gonna be maintaining those staffing levels. Uh, so I just wanted to be really clear about that. Some of the things that we are pursuing, and we will be bringing a recommendation forward to the work session in April, so on April 22nd, we'd be looking to bring a recommendation forward. Some of the things that we are looking at, um, we're gonna be reviewing our hiring practices so that we make sure that we can, uh, see some cost savings in that, in that area as we're moving into, to the next year. Um, in addition to that, we're, we've been working with the teachers' association on, uh, looking into, uh, early retirement incentive, or an early retirement program, and that does have the potential to save a significant amount of money over a one and even two-year period, um, as we would see some of our staffing costs significantly reduced there. And that's really what I'm talking about, just about being mindful as we're reviewing our hiring practices, to make sure that we're still bringing really excellent, uh, teachers and other staff members into the system, but also making sure that we're aware that we need to do that responsibly at the same time. We've also had all of our program directors, uh, really looking at what can they, what can we do, um, around the edges there. I know that Lisa Orin, for instance, has been looking really seriously at where are those areas where we could maybe see some significant improvements on the special ed side? Just, uh, taking an extra look at all of our programming, uh, to see if there's anything that we can do there. So I know that we'll be bringing back some recommendations in that area, again, trying to keep that away from that direct service provision to students, uh, wherever possible. Uh, so that's really, those are really the key areas that we're looking at there, uh, and we're confident that we'll be able to, to hit that number. And we also know that, uh, anytime that we're, that we run into a situation like this, there may be opportunities that we'll need to look a year further down the line to really explore. But we'll do what we, uh, what we believe that we need to in this round to start 1920. Um, so just again, that timeline, we'll be bringing recommendations forward to the board on the April, uh, work session, and then any, any adjustments that would require board action, we'd be looking for a vote on that in May in the business meeting.
Solson's first.
Are there any hopeful signs from the legislature and the governor that there's going to be any sort of adjustment to the special ed funding or any other types of education funding to help ease these issues?
Uh, there's a number of bills in front of the legislature right now where they're looking at special ed funding. Governor has, uh, you know, is looking to increase the formula, and, but we're, we're early in the session to get a, a feeling for what's gonna happen with that.
I think the governor's proposal on special ed essentially keeps the cross subsidy from growing further. So, I mean, it would be helpful, but it wouldn't solve the long-term problem. And then, uh, I don't know if this is a, I don't know if this should cause a sense of optimism, but, um, I believe the, the Senate has got on record as saying, uh, that a two percent and two percent would be where they would expect to land. Governor has proposed three percent and two percent. What did the House propose today? The details come up today or later this week. So if, um, you know, if, if the Senate is saying that two and two is, is the floor as they see it, then perhaps, maybe it will be a little higher than that, but, um, the difficulty is we're in a situation where, um, there's a battle to get two and two on a, on a formula. As Tim indicated, our expenses are going up from three to five, or even six percent. In fact, special ed is probably, I'd take about five percent annually, um, so. So I don't know if there's a sense of optimism or not. I, uh, I'm not optimistic about two and two. There are some folks who would say two and two means we're in a whole harmless situation in school districts, and this, that's simply not true. Two and two is not whole harmless. Two and two is catching up to districts all throughout the state.
And will there be enough time, because, I mean, legislative session ends at the end of May, but we will likely be voting on the budget before that?
Uh, June, you'll be?
Or we, we go down in June?
In June, yep.
Okay.
Yep, and usually by the end of the session, we have a pretty good indication where, where it's gonna land. If they go into special session and we don't know and it's still up for debate, then we, we have to present a budget in June for approval because we are required to by law. So we would make assumptions based on where we think it might be, and then back it off a quarter of a percent or something like that, just to cover us. We built in 1.5 percent on the formula for fiscal '20. So hopefully we're a little higher than that, but, so we've already built in, built in a little bit of a conservative view of, of what the state will do.
Thank you.
I'd probably also just add too, that I think a lot of what we'll be bringing forward in terms of recommendations, um, are things that we would, we probably should be looking at to some extent in any case too. And so I don't know that it would be terrifically impactful if there was, uh, a small change there with legislative funding.
Mr. Chen?
Matt, could you, uh, expand on what you mean when you say, uh, look at hiring practices? Could you give a little more detail about that?
Sure, absolutely. So for instance, um, you know, it can really, you know, I think totally look at that responsibly, especially when times are a little bit tighter, but I really think in general that it can be important to take a little bit more of a market-based approach as we're looking at, uh, hiring talent in any area. But when we're looking at hiring teachers, for instance, you know, there are a lot of areas where we need to aggressively pursue talent and make sure that we're, that we're really active, uh, in that pursuit. So there's a lot of licensure areas where it's really tough to build a candidate pool that we're going to be excited about. At the same time, there's also a number of licensure areas where we will have, um, fifty to two-hundred-and-fifty applicants for our, for our individual roles. And so it's about taking a look at those respective pools and saying, you know, if we have a lot of talent in this pool, where are we gonna responsibly hire there to make sure that, you know, that we can be offering the, the number of sections we wanna offer within our programming?
Other, Mr. Boy?
So what was the reason for going up to 2.5 million? What, what were we seeing in the numbers that caused the increase?
So the increase, yeah, from 1.5 to 2.5 is really based on what, um, we think is a more accurate number. The roll-up costs we originally used, we think is probably too conservative, that two percent increase in expenditures is how tighter than we're gonna be able to operate in.
So right now, we're behind, we're, we're short eleven, eleven, right?
In the cross subsidy.
In the cross subsidy. So are we looking at this trying to get back to even, or what kind of timeframe are we looking at? I mean, because we don't see this changing really anytime soon. So the long-term plan for this?
Are you asking about the cross subsidy in particular, or just the budget in general?
Well, how does this to the budget in general, then, how does that affect the cross subsidy going forward? Or what would you do about the discrepancy? Or what would you do about the discrepancy?
Yeah, the cross, unless they change the special ed formula, I think our cross subsidy's going to be one of these. We'll try to manage those expenditures as much as we can, but there's a mandate called maintenance of effort, which means you can't decrease your spending in special ed from year to year. Now, your inflationary rate's fairly high, so you can try to manage the amount that you grow from year to year, that your expenditures grow from year to year. But, you know, we're bound to meet the maintenance of effort requirements. So that limits a little bit what you can do in your special.
That's what I mean. You've got to come from somewhere because we can't continue. I don't know what school system can.
Yeah. But we need, that's exactly the question that should be answered at the legislature.
So we feel like the 2.5 million offsets some of that?
2 and 1/2. The goal is to present a balanced budget. Now, if we, if I, 2.5 million may not be enough to present a balanced budget in June, that's our goal. But if we take a two-year approach, sort of in June of 2020, to have dealt with the structural imbalance that we have, the goal is to deal with it in that timeframe. 3 million may get, would probably get us to, pretty close to a breakeven budget presentation in May and June. But that's the goal. The goal is to present a two-year balanced budget every year. And so what is it going to take for us to get there? The revenue side is somewhat out of our control. The expense side is in our control to some, to a large extent. We can control some of the variables there. That's what we're going to do.
Mr. Chapman?
So with the, if we're shooting for 2.5 million, where would that put us in terms of surplus percentage? Because I think we, as I recall, we dip below, we've drawn policy on that. Where would that put us back to, or put us at?
Well, this is a preliminary number, but right now, that would show us about 12.5% right at our policy level.
We have some flexibility the next two years to make the changes we need to make and stay within our more adopted policy for fund balance. But we have to act now in order for that to be true going forward.
Other questions, comments? So it sounds like you'll be bringing us at the next April work study, some recommendations, and we'll look at them then and start to move through it. All right? Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
We'll now move to our third discussion item, D3, which is the elementary program update. Ms. Floy?
All right, Chair Mullen, Dr. Kaszczak, members of the board. We are glad, excited to be here tonight to follow up on a presentation that we had a chance to talk with you at a November work study about the confidence of elementary program. Both principal team was here in the fall and we watched through, just to give some context of each of the different areas within the broader elementary program, talked about some of the work ahead. We made a commitment that we would follow up in the spring and some key areas that we had questions around. We've done some work in each of these areas and so we just wanted to provide you an update on the work. So each principal, we kind of paired off in twos and we're just going to go through each area and I think it'd probably be best if we paused for any questions and then keep on rolling through each of the parts. So with that, we're going to start with Sarah and Carrie.
So in the area of physical education, we know that there is a request for more physical activity for our students. And where that has been confirmed through our strategic planning process, that has bubbled up as a request in some of our buildings, finished projects, as well as through the big sleuth, that's been a request to have more physical activity at the secondary level. The other big piece is the standards have been, they're in place and MDE is providing training. They began in January and they have sessions going through May. And we intend to send our team of teachers to go and bring information back so they can unpack those standards and become more familiar and what that means on a daily basis as well as assessment and everything that's embedded within the new information.
So big ideas, we told you we were going to look into the standards. We're doing a lot with the Active Schools Grant, a lot of emerging priority through the strategic planning process that's high in value. Is there any questions that you have on where things are in physical education?
Dr. Minister?
I'm just wondering, has there been a change? Because at least at the secondary level, it's based on what's required. How much does each student need to take? And then they have other elective choices. So has the basic amount that's required by the state changed?
No, they haven't changed, but they're under, right now, they're under review. And so part of why we're going to send a team is that we're going to be looking at what, if any, were any adjustments to what the standards are saying. A lot of, I think, what we're seeing is that a lot of physical activity, you can have set aside time and the value for it to be embedded because of mental health and things that are just part of having a day of, having activity in your day is good for learning and it's good for engagement. So we're paying attention to both of those factors, both from the social, emotional side and how that's been a priority and how being active through active classroom means that there's ways that teachers are getting students up and being active in addition to some of the more structured ways that we have physical education. But we will be engaged in hearing what is coming out of the new standards. And so that's where we'll have a team be going to hear how that's emerged.
So at this point, we're looking for ways, I know elementary has discussed where is recess getting looked and things like that, but I'm looking at it more from the lens of somebody that taught in the secondary system for three decades and, you know, elective is a woman guy like who signs up and wants to fire. And so at this point, there hasn't been a change at the secondary level and we know that we want to encourage, whether it's extracurricular or, you know, get up and move sometimes.
Other questions?
Okay, we're going to shift into art.
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Lopin, principal of Birch Lake, and we'll tell you a little update on art this evening. When we came to, in front of the board earlier with updates about art, we mentioned that since 2008, the district has had the strategy of partnering with the White Bear Center for the Arts, where we have the local artists coming in through that group into our schools doing lessons K through 5. Currently, it's three lessons on watercolors, two on drawing, and one on multicultural paper arts and simple 3D kind of lesson. And finally, we also share that, like some of the other areas, there's an effort to rewrite the standards for the arts at the state level. And Principal Schmitt will tell us a little about what's happening there.
Hey, Principal Lincoln. Some of the updates from the fall just include that the multicultural paper arts lessons that are in place right now all have a specific theme. All the cultural theme to it is based per grade level. And what's really nice is that they took into account the explorations program, which is a multi-credit program. They created a specific theme just for that situation. And all those themes tie directly into our social study of life curriculum, which is really nice. And also just recently, from the Minnesota Department of Education, they put a timeline now on when full implementation takes place, which is the year '21, '22, I believe. And so that puts us on a timeline now as a district to get a team together next fall and start to explore the standards and see how we can implement them with full fidelity by that time. Any questions?
All right. Orchestra, general music.
Cynthia Miller, principal of Otter Lake Elementary School. When we were here in the fall, we talked about John Leanger and I are the liaisons for orchestra and for music. And obviously, there's a connection there. Our fifth graders, we have some stats that we have shared, is roughly 51% of our fifth graders participate in the orchestra program. And that was up roughly a little less than 100 students from the previous year. So it's a very successfully growing program. But with that, we were facing some challenges in integrating it within the components of already an elementary programming. And so we were moving into looking at doing some design thinking around how do we address the scheduling challenges related to a successful orchestra program. And so one of the things we did is we convened a group of, it was general music teachers, orchestra teachers, fifth grade classroom teachers. And then John and I met with them and we did the design thinking process of really empathizing and understanding, you know, what are the strengths and what are some of the challenges? And really being able to define what was the specific challenge and really was related to scheduling ensemble versus small groups. And so we had these kind of problems that we could really define and tackle. And so now we're moving forward into that problem-solving phase related to our program.
So, and a couple of things sort of to add to that. One, in talking with orchestra teachers, it seems like we're kind of leveling off with our numbers, so we're kind of expecting this to stay right around this number, which is sort of what has been, over the last few years, we've been growing. One of the challenges with scheduling, of course, is all of our buildings are unique and different. Some of us are much larger, some are much smaller. So, you know, within that context, every school has to have a little bit of flexibility in there. But really, we learned that scheduling ensemble out of like the music specialist is a really good way for us to schedule that because it pairs like music with orchestras. We're able to be all of the same standards. And it also then reduces the amount of core instructional time that's pulled out of their classrooms there as well. One of the, you know, as we were modeling that, as we worked with that, like at our school, I know I've been teaching and practicing some of that in a few other schools. One of the interesting sort of positive side effects of that is that some of our general music classes on that ensemble day became much smaller. And I went and I talked with one of our teachers, well, how's it working if you have a smaller group of students? And of course, you know, the teacher, wow, this is really awesome because I could really dive into and work with those particular students. They had some unique interest and unique interests which the teacher felt they could actually work with the kids to help spur their interest and help them pursue some of their interests. So, you know, moving forward with that flexibility, we know we're going to continue to try to schedule how the specialists as best we can with flexibility each though, just because we just know that, you know, depending on the size of our schools and the number of students who are participating really changes the demand of flexibility in how we can schedule those during the school day. So overall, I think it's been a really successful year. We're really happy with the great things we've done.
Any questions, questions about general music or orchestra? No? All right. Thank you.
I just want to commend the principals for looking at, trying to see an opportunity and a challenge because we had been looking at orchestra evolves as a separate piece from general music. And by bringing them together, they could actually come to something that everybody had agreement on, that it was the ensemble, that was where the opportunity was to find a better solution for. And they did such a good job of just talking with each other and finding ways to kind of stop looking at things separately, even though there was a good purpose to begin it that way. Where's the opportunity to improve the experience for students and staff? And that was such a win-win across everybody that they had pulled together. All right, well, language.
Sorry. Excuse me one second. Dr. Minister?
Just one question from a longtime band coaster. I'm glad to see orchestra back after like a 20-year hiatus because I remember when violin practiced across from Lake Air's library and that was a wild call. How is it, what's the plan? Because it sounds like you're really creatively planning. What's the plan as you look a year or two or three down the lane as orchestra and band merge?
Orchestra, band in middle school?
Yes.
Okay. How would you?
We talked, we kind of were unpacking parts of this when we began talking about this at the beginning of the year because it is back to that original design piece of why are we starting orchestra in elementary and then we're waiting to start band in middle school? But it seemed, and as Cynthia referred to, using the design thinking process, that was not the root issue. And so I think what they've addressed is really getting at, there's a lot of things working right now. And I think that the challenge that we thought it might be between orchestra and band really wasn't the root of the problem. And so I think the solution that they came to really did address how to have a robust launch to orchestra. And then, at this time, we, you know, we're still tracking and we're in conversation because a lot of the work for the next year and a half is around the line of elementary program to middle school. And as we change things in middle school, it has impact on elementary and vice versa. But for this year, we feel confident we can find a way.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, that's an answer approaching things from all kinds of angles. But I'm just wondering, the practicality of, is this the second year? I mean, I'm a little dense. Is this the second full year of orchestra?
This is the third.
Third. Okay, so third.
Fourth.
So they have merged with middle school. And that was my question. What happens in middle school at this point? Not that it won't change, but what happens? I mean, any program is richer when you have more instruments and more kinds of music you can play. And then it's more complex as, now how do you, what do this?
So it's a good question. I guess I'd like to follow up with you on that. I mean, I think what you're asking is a little more, is band, a band and orchestra and then a blend of the two?
No, I mean, I've seen this at the college level where people go at different schools. What I'm asking is, as we look ahead at a program that we started, now it's moving down the line, what's happened?
So then, I was sort of, and again, just my lens from the management.
It's all good.
Right, right. And what I've seen, continue to expand, you know, into the middle school and in the high school, and my understanding is that it continues to grow there. I think one of the things that I've seen change over the last few years that I've been able to participate is, when we first began, it was kind of like band and orchestra. And I know that when we met, it really felt like it was music department. And I thought that was a very healthy adjustment in a thought process of not orchestra and band all competing, but hey, we're a well-rounded music department bringing good things to children. It's hard to speak, you know, where they're at, that transition level as they bring it into the high schools. But I know certainly, you know, at the elementary school and I assume at the middle school because our elementary teachers work closely with the middle school people, really, we're a music department bringing good things to all of our children. And I think that's a really healthy, healthy and natural change from starting out with two programs to we're all music and we're all for kids.
Well, they're all a music department. And I'm just thinking, as we look ahead, whether it's solo or raise or orchestra or whatever, what happens as we, what did the music department envision? Because I assume they're the ones that created this vision.
They envisioned both and, and of course, you have, Dr. Newfester, as you've been in secondary, you know enrollment drives offerings. And so there always has been this concern of if we add orchestra, will it be the demise of the band? And it just. You do see numbers, you know, fluctuate a little bit, but both programs are viable and running at this time. So I appreciate your question.
And even, you know, recently, I had a conversation with a fifth grade student at Otter Lake who's in orchestra and talking about, are we going to continue that in the middle school? She said, you know what? I think I'd like to also try band. So I think that's, so I think it's also, it gives those, at least gives them an opportunity to experience it. And then again, kind of a little bit that student ownership and agency about what do I want to do with this as well? And they have more than one option.
Hardly any choice, it was such a ritual.
Yeah, they have to.
Ms. Floy?
So are we still on a three-day cycle through all of these programs? Is that still staying the same through all of these processes that we're going through? And if next year, it stays the same? So with the music standards, is it, is it just music or is it something like in secondary school, you can choose to do choir, you can do orchestra, you can do band? Are you required in elementary to have to do music as in singing? You can't pick something else?
So the music standards for elementary are more around like general music, right? And so they have choral operations in their music program, but it's a general music class. So they have experiences with, you know, with singing, with movement and dance, with different instruments as well. It was like an all-encompassing, really.
So can orchestra take over that piece of it? If some kids decide that they're not doing orchestra, but they're going to use music those days, that cycle?
Well, I think what you're understanding is their solution for ensemble.
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out. Well, that's what I was trying to figure out. So that they wouldn't ever go into music? They would just do the lesson and then ensemble?
No, they'd still be part of general music and.
So once in a six-day, once in a six-day cycle, so once in a six-day cycle, the class separation was into ensemble and general music. And then the other day in that six-day cycle, all together, general music. So our, so the music teacher and the orchestra teacher collaborating closely, making sure all of the standards, you know, are covered in that.
But then the pullouts, there's still pullouts for lessons?
There's still pullouts for lessons.
So I guess what I'm thinking is, is if it's, if they're just doing orchestra, couldn't, they're just doing orchestra. So one of those days, third week would be ensemble, the other day would be lessons unless you needed that other music.
That would be an increase in, well, necessarily an increase. It would be.
The same amount of time, you would just only be focusing on one particular thing?
Yeah, yeah. It would be a shifting, yeah, scheduling.
It would be a scheduling. We have to, we would have to sort of look at the numbers because if you have fifty students who are taking small group lessons, you couldn't fit that into that compact forty-five minute time. So we, you know, certainly.
Even I'm wondering if that would work.
We do it best.
Yeah, yeah.
So we, it would be something we would look at, you know, just, you know, like we talked about, some of those kind of things, just your number of students involved, it's hard to do individual lessons like that. You know, one of the things that we do know about the individual lessons and core content is our teachers trying to change, you know, by quarter when a student is being pulled out. So if a student has their individual lessons, you know, on a Tuesday at ten o'clock, it won't be the entire year, so they're not missing the whole thing. And then the teachers and orchestra teachers are also very, in very close communication. We know that there are some students who are, might be struggling in content area, they will coordinate, you know, probably best to take this student at this time. You want to make sure they don't miss, you know, this particular math lesson or these particular math lessons. So a big part of that individual, small group lessons is kind of fluid and coordinated between the classroom teacher and the orchestra teacher to make sure that I'm missing anything. But in general, it seemed to be going smoother than I know I can speak from. You know, our music teacher specifically asked them, "How's it going?" He said, "Oh my gosh, this is great. I know the music teacher, we're coordinating, we're collaborating, you know, this student is, they can do these in-quarter projects, they're loving these ensembles as well." And I think we're glad that we added. Always, of course, looking for new ways to think about that. And, you know, having to schedule is always, I mean, shoot it, one more thing. I'm trying to do a lot of it right now, we're putting along pretty well.
And I think one of the big ideas to take away is, as you heard about art and as you heard about FIAID and you look at the standards work, and next year being the year that's going to be important for the review of those standards, when you pull one thread of this, it impacts all the other parts. And so next year is really aligning to be a year that we really need, be looking at a deeper look of how to maybe look at changing things a little bit more significantly. But, but right now, I think that, you know, the solution that we have here is a really good one. And it's a way to provide better programming. But in the context of it's a whole program, you got to be, we have to be thoughtful about when all the parts can come together and we're really looking at any bigger changes. And next year may be a year that we might want to be looking at that. All right, world language.
Other questions? Okay.
Hello, and Chris, right, Chris from Old River, Entry School. And talking about world language when we met with you all in the fall, we talked about reworking the kindergarten curriculum to set higher expectations to better prepare our kindergartners for that continued language study. And the Spanish teachers and the Chinese also, the world language teachers, also wanted to consider a K-12 alignment of world language offerings to provide exposure and access for those kids for in-depth language acquisition and then continued training and comprehensive input model.
So, and then this year, they have a continued framework. They revamped the first and fifth grade curriculum to incorporate more specific cultural learning targets within their curriculum. So for example, if they're learning maximum play, Hermano, Hermana, Chico, Chica, they would tell stories to be part of their Spanish curriculum. But they wanted to make sure it included a big part of the elementary's also cultural understanding. And so they specifically lined up different Spanish-speaking cultures to insert in those curriculums and stories to make sure they're not all piled like just on Mexico or just on Spain, which is to broaden that scope and broaden that worldview. And then the other big piece that they've been working on this year is really, they've, all of the kindergarten standards have been rewritten to create some higher expectations and standards. There was ongoing into it that kindergarten learning experience was soft and was okay to ramp it up and accelerate that, a little more. So all of those learning targets and prerequisites adjusted and that it was younger grades to make it a little bit more challenging for them. So ongoing work, I know with that kind of alignment, I know one of the world language teachers volunteered to agree to attend the secondary world language meetings as well. So there's been some of those connections in the beginning, those cross-grade level conversations, which is an ongoing goal for the world language program. Questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
All right. And then we wanted to, we had shared with you that we had been looking at a model in last year in terms of how we were doing media and reach services. And so we want to start with giving you an update of things that are going on this year and then things looking forward.
Yes, me. I'm here with the theory on, Mr. Alonka. Welcome. Obviously. So, Alonka, I think one of the key reasons for us was really turning media center to enable learning and that's kind of been our guiding principle that we move forward with this year. And we knew that you can do things with spaces, but you also have to do things, not just for any space, but do things with staff and kids and do things without rolling. So we did start with getting our students and our staff to follow with how do we want the media center to look and how we use it. That was a year-long process on staff and over spring break able to perform. So I have an invitation to stop up to the media center sometime to post different, now that it didn't begin this whole year. There's really neat places for kids to collaborate. There's comfortable spaces for kids to lay, lounge, read, go to enjoy themselves. And what I can tell you is, between converting spaces and converting minds, our media center is a colossus and has varied inside of us. But along with that, we, you know, we had to provide a lot of opportunities for collaboration on staff and staff elements and professional development of staff. So Julie Stonehouse was here last time we presented to you guys, really has gone all the way to try to name countries with staff. Kind of what they, how do they, how does she make creating an environment in which the media center is a place for all the people to go to? And so she's teaching staff how to set instruction, look at them, and to them working together. She's also created this situation, knowing that they want to make sure that they have communication tools going back and forth. So one of the things she's trying to develop is some type of messaging system so that she can communicate, not just kind of run up to go and talk to the rooms, but be able to digitally communicate with people about, "What do you mean? How do you want to be community here? How do you want the media center operate? What kids are you sending down? What project are they working on?" So we have that kind of, that student agency and Tommy, we're going to, we're fiercely now comfortable sending her kids down, we're going to project, knowing that there's an adult there all the time that knows what, how support the students are getting their learning. And that's a change for us. And it's been a really positive change. So what I can tell you is that kind of that instructional piece of the media center is working way beyond the walls of the media center. And that's spoken, whatever happened. Jason, might you want to fill in a little bit of how your position or your position is?
Very similar as far as the space. It's amazing what a few tables that you flip up and easy chairs can do to a space and some comfortable seating. You know, the big difference between Alonka and then Hugo Badness is, you had some retirements and whatnot, complacent. Why do we have someone come like Hugo, once every six days to do help with media, and another person comes once every six days and helps with enrichment? Sort of way begin combined, so a person can be here more. So instead of once every six days, it's two out of five. And those other days then, this person travels over to Badness. And so just that alone, having one person that's able to come and get to know the staff, work with the staff, work with the students, has been, it's been remarkable change. Along with the flipping of the tables and things like that. You know, the biggest case, Alonka, was that one person that's there every day of the week, right? What it was, two out of five days. So, you know, anytime I have meetings with the NCA bar, it's always the same, they come back to like great things that are taking place. We need to work now with a self-campus, juniors at self-campus and work that they're doing, which is really great for people, my starting children, so just really great things, partnering out with self-campus. But just to, you know, a campus back down to, you just couldn't have more time with that one individual. That would be great, you know, so.
One other detail just to leave you an idea of how this cycle is going to come. So we started the space clubs after school to our people. Both our third person and our media, our junior teacher, they're both twins. We opened the second one up on the P P at one AM and filled out by five AM. I mean, is that crazy or what? Very tough.
Well, this is the one I need to speak at, and I'm sure some people knew what I was going to do. I served in the district from nineteen seventy-one till the time I joined the school board in twenty sixteen. And during that time, I was a media specialist at Lincoln's Elementary for dozen years, taught German at Mariner, and ignored, comes back to media, ignored, comes back to German and came back to media. Self-obsession for language as well as communicating via technology and literacy. And I have to speak and say, I'm glad to see we're getting, and I'm not being snarky, but I'm glad to see we're getting a chrome back of what we have. Six years ago, I believe that the elementary media's program got lapped, it was robust. When I started, we had eleven schools. Every school had a media specialist. And last year, I remember sending a number of administrators a copy of the state licensure requirements for media specialists. And I want people to realize that media specialists are experts in technology, literacy, reading literacy. When I started, we had a monthly program for preschoolers and parents. We're expanding our elementary schools. We know growth is there. We know the preschool education is there. We know every kid develops reading at a young age. Those early years are critical. Our kindergarten is preschooler junkets service. I think that we need to look at the fact that in White Bear, we have the lowest percent of staffing in media that we've had in more than forty years and have been around more than forty years. It's, it's just not fair to our kids. I prepared things that I've sent, there's research that supports the fact that a robust elementary media program, fully staffed, and I heard people say, "It's wonderful to have someone there." Someone should be there. If we're talking about our strategic plan and students being the agent of their own learning, we need a licensed media person there who can help with the creation and the collaboration and the work that kids need to be doing when they're the agent of their own learning and they're making choices. The media person is an educator, an expert educator, and then they're trained beyond that to facilitate literacy and technology. We wrote the original technology lesson plans, and they've changed. You can't do that when you have three or four people covering nine schools with growing populations. A national study isolated, and I wanted to make sure I said this, research variables, and this was twenty fifteen, research variables which affect the achievement and the opportunity gap. The presence of a school librarian was isolated. Poverty was a strong factor with a negative effect. The presence of a school librarian was a very strong positive factor in predicting reading scores, and its effect was nearly as strong as the effect of poverty. We need our media program to be robust. We need those elementary media centers to be staffed by professional experts. And I know, I love honor. I go to all the PTO meetings. Parents are just crazed and enthused. And they say, "It's empty half the day. There's nobody here." When you've got a media specialist less than half the time, you're not using those wonderful spaces no matter what kind of furniture you have. So it's not, the things are great, but we need the people that create the connection and research supports it. White Bear stands alone in what they did to elementary media. We're functioning as secondary because kids are very still looking to be there. But elementary, we're not even there. So as we look at things, I hope we remember that and know our kids deserve that. We want to have everything, but they used to have this and it's gone. So I'm glad to hear people say, "It's great, they're there." Maybe you haven't tried, but that's not good enough. That's it.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Dr. Mazzinger.
I guess the one takeaway we wanted to bring to you is, we're so excited about the strategic planning process and the number of people that were engaged, both at the district level and at each site. At each site, there is such energy and excitement around a lot of people that got together to create a vision for the direction of their school. And so part of what we're trying to take away from the pilot that we did was similar to some of the comments that Marge made of that when you have an instructional leader in a building that has relationship with teachers, that is there to really drive a hub of learning for the school, for the adults and the students, and that teachers are supported to try new things in their instruction, try things in a different way, that there's something to that. And so along with the empowerment that came from the strategic plan, it's also how do we keep connecting that with a coherent system and support that in terms of district resourcing? So we're, we're really just trying to wrap our head over there because bless you, the, there's a lot of energy and there's, there's natural alignment that has occurred between what came out of the district plan and what has come out across all of these uniquely coordinated site plans. And so how do we really think about maximizing our resources in order to create that hub of learning in every school because it's to take benefit of the adults and the students? So that's, that's really kind of what we're wrestling right now and we're, probably hear about some of that, so we have this one involved, you know, moving forward. But it's a great place to be here. And I know we, part of our conversation today is about budget reduction. Like Mr. Mont said, part of it is just about making sure that we're really being thoughtful about resourcing our schools as the key has been changed to really bring about better outcomes for students. We're excited about the work moving forward. Lots of, lots of factors to consider, but we're excited.
Well, thank you very much and thank you to you for your work. Really appreciate influencing some of our youngest learners. So I know there's a lot of energy in those souls that have been out visiting and all that comes from the work that you guys do. So thank you all very much. Thank you. So with that, we can move into our last discussion item, which is the negotiations strategy discussion. This is portion of the meeting we made to close to consider strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation strategies or developments for the session and review of labor negotiation calls. And drunk, kind of presumed Minnesota City, one seventy-nine, eight oh one, one seventy-nine, eight twenty-five. But after our motion, we'll go into closed session.
So chair. We'll do closed session.
We've got a motion and a second. We will go into closed session. We need upstairs that were in two oh one in five minutes. That, all right. Is there a closed session?